Okay, yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Newburyport zoning board of appeals hearing of Tuesday, August 26, 25. It being the appointed hour of 7:00 p.m., I am going to go ahead and open this meeting and take a moment to introduce myself as well as my colleagues. We will be dealing with a few housekeeping matters, including the business of requested continuances that are applications that are on our agenda. My name is Rob Chanpetty, I'm currently serving as Chair. To my immediate left is Ken Swan, our Vice Chair, to his left, Mr. Stephen Dewal, our Secretary, to his left, Mr. Gregory Bennet, our zoning member. Mr. Walter Chen and zoning member, Mr. Larry Ginta is an associate member, he's on his way, should be walking in shortly. We'll just take his affirmative role when he arrives, and then Mr. Jared Igerman, also associate member. The way we will conduct our business this evening is we will begin by, of course, going through a rule call which formalizes that we have established the legal voting members of the ZBA are here, are present and on the record. I will call a rule and we will determine, is it far obvious who's here? We will also establish, this is more of a legal basis, of the five voting members of the ZBA this evening. Of the seven that may be present at max, only five will be voting, the other two as associates. Serve in every other capacity other than to vote, that includes deliberations, questions, participation and otherwise. And will themselves step up into a voting role in the event that a voting member must recuse themselves due to conflict or or eating butter or other, you know, other matters. So what we will do, just to lay it plain, as I look at this, this room, we don't have that many folks in the room, so I will be kind of abridged in this because it looks like Betty, you may already know it. We will go through our agenda in the order in which we have it on our agenda. Everything that you're hearing me say and everything that I refer to is also being broadcast simultaneously behind me. All the members have laptops up, so if you see us not looking at just, please know that we're not missing anything. We're seeing exactly what you're seeing, as is a simultaneous, for the time being, simultaneous broadcast online. For the moment, Newburyport zoning board of appeals have since COVID been publishing a hybrid version of this meeting, which is now coming to a close, with notice, deliberation, ready to vote. We will be, we will be promulgating additional bylaws for the ZBA by which we will hope to streamline our process and, and require anyone who wishes to participate to be in the room and present unless it is a member themselves who can't be. And that is sort of aligned with the Attorney General's rule and standard post-COVID, as well as many cities and towns above the Commonwealth, including our own city with other boards and commissions. So that will be more to come about that, but for the time being, we are broadcasting simultaneously through this owl system. So anyone who wishes to speak, we do ask that you take a podium so that the microphone can record you, and we will ask you to name an address so that Ms. Gretchen Joy, to my far right, keeper of minutes, can report things. To her left is Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner, and to my immediate right, Andy Port, our Planning Director for the City of Newburyport. So without further ado, I'll take the role, we'll get things going, and we'll get right into our agenda. The first things that we will take care of this evening will be the matters on our agenda, which we have received requests for continuance, and we will go through that and take on the rest of the business of this evening. So without further ado, calling the role, the Newburyport zoning board of appeals, please, members of the ZBA, respond with either here or present, Mr. Swan, here, Mr. Dewal, here, Mr. Bennet, here, Mr. Chen, here, Mr. Ginta. Mr. Iger, here, Rob Chanpetty, I'm here, that is six presidents, that establishes us a quorum. For the moment, the five voting members will be myself, Mr. Swan, Mr. Dewal, Mr. Bennet and Mr. Chen. Mr. Ginta, who is shortly to arrive, and Mr. Igerman will be our alternates. And as I mentioned, will participate every way except voting unless there is an application for which a member who is voting, a legitimate motion, must recuse. So going through to our next meeting, on our agenda, to our next bullet point, we have our public hearings. The first matter that's before us is the application of Nick Lewat and Nick Lowery, 234 Merrimack Street. This is a matter that was continued from 8:20, sorry, 6:24, 2025, is a three-pronged application. The applicant was seeking three elements of relief, a special permit, a special permit for a multifamily use, a special permit to allow the demolition of the structure within the demolition control overlay district or the DCMD. And then finally, the third, which was a variance, a relief from frontage. The applicant is seeking a request to withdraw without prejudice. Without prejudice simply means that unless the board finds otherwise. Without prejudice means that they may come back before us with a reapplication or resubmission. There is no prejudice bestowed upon them for their withdrawal, nothing that would penalize in any way, they're simply deciding to not go forward. So with that, members of the ZBA, do we have any comments, questions, deliberations, or do we have a motion to, to allow the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice?
Chairman, this one predates me, so I can't participate.
Thank you. So our five voting members are Mr. Chen, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Dewal, Mr. Swan and myself, Mr. Igerman is recused and Mr. Ginta has yet to arrive. So of the voting members, well, actually, of the voting members, unless Mr. Igerman was not conflicted out, he would be able to participate. But is there any comment, any deliberation, and if not, we have a motion and a second to accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice? Thank you, Mr. Swanton. And the second, Mr. Dewal, motion is made to, to accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Dewal. Calling the role, Mr. Swan.
Yes, Mr. Dewal.
Yes. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
So yes, it's a five-year permit, the eyesight of motion carries, matter is withdrawn from our docket without prejudice. Moving now to the matter of 45 St. Avenue, this is important, Plaza, building trust care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tower, LLC. This is a continuation and an application for a comprehensive permit, also known as a 40B application. On St. 45 St. Avenue, continued from July 22, 2025, continue meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, and everybody, it was exciting to talk about traffic this evening. However, we received the peer review, worst peer review report at 7 o'clock this morning, 6:51 actually. And therefore, and it included things that, and new things that our traffic engineer had not anticipated and wanted to review, it was a pretty significant document, and he did not have time to do that today. So we're requesting a continuance to September 23, where also we'll be talking about stormwater.
Attorney Mead, so your intention is to present both traffic, traffic study, traffic analysis, as well as?
Stormwater.
Giving the stormwater. So basically, and for those that are familiar with sort of our opening and how we laid out in anticipation of the organizational structure of the comprehensive permit, we thought of it, though it is malleable, to be revised as separate subject matter verticals. Traffic, traffic analysis, stormwater, geotech, hydrotech, design, other things, so that we can organize the subject matters. So the first matter before us was to be traffic. And it sounds like we'll hear from, with respect to both traffic, as well as stormwater. Members of the ZBA, comments or questions for Attorney Mead, Swanton?
Yeah, I guess my concern is, we had our last field hearing on this on June 24, which was a long time ago. At that time, we were hoping to have a July 22. But that got continued. Now getting out of the middle of it. By continuing the traffic conversations for a total of 60 days before we actually begin to talk about it. Chunk of our preparation, 30 days, to respond to this comprehensive permit, which is the biggest project we've ever had. They give up a third of the time while the consultants are before it's involved. I'm not amused about using up so much of the time we have left, waiting for traffic guys to talk to us, like to get involved. So I guess my question is, would you be willing to extend the 180-day timeframe? Because of this delay you're making on track.
I think the answer tonight is no, because there's only two months into the process. And if I could just go back with the dates, I think it's important, if I could. So you're right, we opened on 6:24. We didn't get text peer review until 7:17, that was a Friday. The hearing was on 7:22. Part of that peer review required additional counts, so we couldn't come back on 7:22. So we asked for continuance. So we had to do those additional counts and all of the other information tech requests, which was fine, so we did it. So we got tech there, our report, our response to their response on 8:18, a week ago Monday. And we didn't receive the response until today. So I don't think it's, you know, and you weren't casting any aspersions, it somehow was our delay. But there's, there's some delays in here that we had no control, right? So at this time, I don't have the authority to bring in an extension. We're early in the process, I know it seems like we're not early in the process. But once these first reviews happen on the 23rd, I think you'll see things move a lot faster. And, excuse me, after that meeting, if we think that that's necessary, then we'll have that conversation. But I think it's too early at this time, and frankly, I don't have the authority to grant that extension tonight.
The other problem with the 23rd is, I was assuming that's when we'd be following up. I don't think it's benefited what he, the 23rd, we already have more of a hearing schedule. Thought of doing decent job on traffic and visually, anyway, stormwater. It's, it's really not realistic.
Well, openings.
Opening, so yeah, but opening traffic, closing traffic, opening stormwater, just on top of four hearings? No, I mean, I don't, just don't see it, so. I, I, I do like to be talking about, can't see just continuing. As we're using up the amount of time we have, we're working on, never discuss this among ourselves since the 24th. So it's, it's, another alternative is a special meeting. Meeting anybody, I'm just saying, no, this is not all benefited at the 23rd, you're unwilling to extend the timeframe. We just don't have time to wrestle with the issues.
Mr. Swanton, I'm not unwilling to extend the timeframe, I'm not willing to do it tonight, and I don't have the authority to do it tonight. So I'm not unwilling to do it, this is a collaborative process. Look, you've seen me a lot of times up here for many, many years. I'm not backing anybody into any corners, I don't have the authority to do it tonight. I don't think it's necessary to do it tonight, that's not at all saying we're not ever going to do it again. And frankly, if I backed to a corner and the board proved that it was our delay without the any response, the board has a right to just extend. So I don't think you could do it now, because I think the delays have not been on us, frankly, but it's not, it's not going to happen.
So I have another question, which if our consultant had not sent a report to you on to them this morning, this morning, had simply come to the tonight's meeting and said, I'm sending it to you, we'd probably be happy with the meeting, right? Basically, you're saying you're delaying, if you got this in.
Well, we got an email, and we're saying that there is information in there that was unexpected and unreviewed. And no professional's going to stand up here without knowing what that report is. Andy, frankly, has other things to do today. It's not, it's a lot, it's detail, it's important, it needs to be right.
It's so important, we will never sit in any
If I, if I might, not to, I don't want to truncate Mr. Swanton's comments, I may be right, I certainly find myself aligned with others on this board may as well. I think that in that this is the first next hearing of 40B, and by that, I think, if it isn't clear, it is only the first next hearing. Though I think there is an expectation of cadence, we had allowed ourselves to become comfortable with it because we're sort of working backwards from this, this antithetical terminus of under maybe days, though flexible and changeable if it comes to pass. I think what we're hearing, and I'll just, I don't mean to put words in people's mouth, but Attorney Mead is saying that they are certainly open to being open to that. And at the end of the day, this board also has discretion legally to extend it if we feel as though the process has been deprived of its due process. And that's something that's still, but for tonight, if you don't have the authority, then allow Mr. Swanton's comments with my alignment to just be, just be as ingestion that we are, we're now looking at this with an eye toward six months from now, so as to not find ourselves six months from now wondering where all the time. And I think I disagree, if we, in fair-mindedness, that that is something we may need to reproach, knowing that it's, it's being raised tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Mr. Iger, Mr. Swanton's not necessarily alone in any of those things, but I want to see what the rest of the board has to say, but Mr. Swanton, I didn't want to
I'd like to hear it.
Okay, then.
A couple of questions. Are you intending, is your expert intending to put together a response to the, to the city that
Oh, absolutely.
And can we, when can we see that in the record?
So I don't know, he didn't tell us today when that would be, but the goal, we can get it in plenty of time for TEC to turn around their response to the board as well. So, you know, Mr. Bennet, I, so, two weeks, maybe?
Two weeks.
Which would be two weeks before the meeting?
Fine, remain it, but I just wondered, just a question, what's wrong with the?
Well, so I'm, I'm, I'm in West Ramas, at another meeting, what's up?
I understand, I believe it's your expert going to review this. It's disappointing that our hearing's away to go two weeks now, this word in court, it could be a day or two days and whatnot. I take Mr. Swan's point, it's a significant one, thank you. If you say your, your response to him. I will, I would suggest, in addition to this, of this extension, the requirement, your response to the city's report be submitted within two weeks.
I was going to tell you, I think, I'm not writing it, I understand. So I will, I will express that to
No.
I will tell Mr., I will tell Mr. Dirk that that is the expectation and requirement of the board.
With all due respect, we do not conduct our hearings based upon your experts. Two weeks is adequate time for an expert to submit a report, even going back and forth. I absolutely will not go for extension unless that, unless that's condition.
So that's fine, and I'll tell him that, but what's the same of your expert to turn around and give it to us at least a week or at least more than the day of, or the Friday, the meeting?
I take that point.
The meeting.
Say, it's a little disappointing, it's still a long way to I think we'd be embarrassing, I think it's like
If I could have just declared, I think there was supplemental information, I don't know that their turnaround time was significant when they got additional information here to review, so.
Well, I just, I'm going to give you the dates again, let's be really clear with the dates, are We had a hearing on 6:24, and you had our peer review report at that time, actually, you had it 30 days before that, okay? We didn't get their report until 7:17, which was the Friday before the 7:22 meeting. We then were required to do additional counts and other work. And so we got his report, we got our expert's report back to TEC on 8:18, a week ago Monday. We got his report this morning.
Yeah, so you took a week. Took a week, but yeah, a week to me does not sound like a significant, right, issue for it's all the turnaround situation, like just to be quite, not sure that that is necessarily
Can, can I, if I, if I might expect, I don't mean to interrupt this board, but I will say that from my seat, it is about the week, it's about, it is about that it is a week, it's about that it is this particular week. The timing of delivery, though it took seven days, it's not about seven days, it's about seventh day. The placement of the seventh day puts us at a disadvantage as a board and as the city, and it's not on you or, or, but we need to, we, we will need to, we're going to beat this debt, this timeline with credibility. We must be robust in our drive forward, we must hold ourselves and each other accountable to a timing that might not be comfortable, might not be convenient, and surely will. And for all of us up here, all of you, we are here this evening, and most of the people in the audience, the applicant and their professionals, and our peer review consultants, all of us will have to equally burden a pinch of, of slight inconvenience to make sure that the seventh day isn't simply a measure of seven days. We have to make sure that we think about big picture, because the reality is that the seventh day of those seven days, while seven days was just a week, and that's reasonable. It lands in a way that puts us at a disadvantage that we as a board now sit here and say, you know, yes, but I get it, you're not prepared to go forward, but it's, it's, what contributes to that is that you receive something in this morning, as did we. Maybe going forward, we just have to be more communicative with our peers, and we will hold the applicant's consultants to the exact same standard. If we don't, and we don't just get okay with the discomfort of all, knowing that it's not discourteous, it's just discomfort, we will not make more than we can.
And so I, I want to be really clear also, like, not only did we respond to the TEC report, we responded to the DBW report, responded to the city's engineer report, and we put a presentation in yesterday in anticipation of presenting tonight. So we, we were all ready to go, and that's what happened this morning. So I think Mr. Bennet, two weeks, and I'm hopeful that we'll get the city's report review at least a week before the meeting as well.
Mr. Swanton had, Mr. Igerman, Chair.
Mr. Rock. Yeah. I, I side with Mr. Bennet on this, I think this is the way to go, I mean, we're, this is where we are. They don't have their expert here, the applicant doesn't have their expert, right? I, we are where we are. Going forward, I, I think if, if the board is inclined to grant a continuance, which, you know, makes sense if they don't have it here. You should condition it on two weeks' deadline for a response from BAI. And then one week in advance for our, but, but I just, what I wanted to point out, is a lot of the comments, and I think a lot of us spend a lot of time reading all of this stuff. So before you continue, for the benefit of the public and the applicant, I think we should give some feedback. I mean, as, as, as Mr. Swan said, you know, we haven't, we opened this thing 60 days ago, we haven't said it. So for example, I don't want the public or the applicant to think that consultant's off on an island. We have some of the same rights, same questions, and a lot of what the act sent back this morning at 5:00 AM was just a reiteration of what they had risen before. Wasn't new, it was just saying, I'm still not happy with what's said. So I, I think we need to, we need to do everything before we just show up here. And one, shouldn't we at least, you know, talk about those issues so we know what, what's on the table? And then, and then, yes, of course, don't have to respond, we don't have time, we'll respond next.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would greatly urge the board not to do that, because we do not have our expert here. I would want our expert to be here, to hear what the board has to say. I'm asking for continues, do not want a discussion to not, I don't have my expert, I don't have my, my, either my engineer or my traffic engineer, I don't have my client. I do not want to have a discussion tonight, it is entirely inappropriate for them not to hear directly what the board has to say.
I, I got to say to my colleagues, I don't disagree with that, I feel like, I feel it within the short term, but I don't think it serves us effectively, other than to know that we've said it out loud, I don't think it resonates. People tuned to this subject matter are not here, and, and, and that frustrates me, as I'm sure it frustrates you, but Mr. Igerman, I agree with you, it serves our, really advances our interests, because I think we're just going to have to say these things again, be experts in this subject matter. I mean, well, let me ask you this, let me stop, we're not So as I say that out loud, these are just our thoughts and comments as lay experts or lay people who serve, not as the traffic experts speaking in peership to your traffic, you know, to your experts. So why, why not just simply hear what our thoughts?
I do not, I do not want to have my traffic expert not here, and I will, I am objecting to it. I'm going to put it on the record, if this work continues with having a discussion without our traffic expert and our engineer here to hear what the board has to say. I think it's entirely inappropriate, I put the request for continuance in the portal, other people may have seen it and not be here and want to hear the discussion. I think it's inappropriate, I'm objecting to it, and
I, I, I hear in respect, the objection, and certainly, we, we noted, but let me unpack a bit more of this for just a moment, Attorney Mead.
Oh, I mean, if I do, I don't much with the gang, we haven't generalized to chat, issues with that hearing answer. Moves, moves the ball much, you know, Attorney Mead. I did want to ask another follow-up question, that is, you know, maybe I Is there a stream of written communication between the city and the applicant, and the applicant here?
Just the, the, just the, the peer review reports that you see that are, that are in
There are no other written indicators that should be in this record that would inform. All right, so as long as we're kind of drilling down on this, you indicated we're going to do stormwater.
Yes.
Well, whether we do or do not, you, you intending to submit another that issue as well?
Absolutely, and that should be ready a couple of weeks before the meeting as well. I don't, I haven't touched base with him this week, but I know that they're doing their calculations.
Let me ask you a question, are you awaiting, is your expert on stormwater awaiting the communication information? The city is an expert on this?
I don't know, the answer is no, we were asked to do more engineering calculations that require a bunch of other things to happen, and that's what they're working on, and it's important.
Right. And comparisons, providing comments, and the applicant
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's right, fine, right, so I would also, what else? And add herbs that we consider attaching into a condition of this extension that that
So, Mr. Bennet, on that one, I really can't say that because I know that they have to, they were asked, so they provided, I'm just going to give you an example. As part of our application and their initial report, they provided the velocity calculations for the stormwater for our site.
Excuse me, when did you get the information from the city? Questions from the city there?
Two, three weeks ago, something like that.
Come on.
So can I, may I finish, please? They have asked, instead of saying no, they have asked for us to provide the velocity calculations for the entire shopping center area, which would never done, because that's not our application. And so our expert agreed to provide those to the city's peer review person. And so it's not something that can be done overnight, it's a significant piece of engineering calculation.
Know whether it is or isn't.
I knew it is, probably are.
I mean, how big, you know, what's in a red, I don't know, I'm just going to make, your expert has been telling us all of it. All I'm saying is, is that in my experience, a board which has authority over an application says, we need expert opinion reports. It's not driven by the applicant threat written by this board. And you've had that, but on August 7, and we're going to September 23. I cannot imagine if your expert on stormwater are solvent, they can't get that in a week or two before.
So what we can do is just refuse to provide that additional information if they don't have it, because it's on the entire site.
Are you objecting to that, Shannon?
Nope, I mean, you can go ahead.
Well, then I suggest
I don't have information for my client, I mean, for my
Hold on, no, I want, I want to assume that they if you think that the questions and the request is objectionable, then I suggest you file an objection now and not wait later on and further delay these proceedings.
We're not objecting to, we
Okay. All right. So I, so your word is that you're going to provide them, you don't object to them. Now it's just a question of when you can do it.
What, in the
Okay, slight event to report, the missed report. By the end of the week is when your expert
I can absolutely do that.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. Just don't, I have no problem with that.
We're not going to be hamstrung by, you know, various experts' schedule. Schedule, we have a job here, have to do it. Given you plenty of opportunity to do this.
I have no problem giving you that information by the end of the week, or giving it to the board.
Just support, just quickly, just do a system. That's not just to get that information back from the applicant, additional information here. Do his review, put it together, so you have this input as well when we go back. We would check that.
Swanton, I think it's totally unrealistic to be thinking about Stormwater on the twenty third. More other hearings that traffic is going to take message The town I was in, we, we never did forty P's on the especially in the beginning. It's just too big.
All right.
I think that, that's maybe easy for you.
When would we consider to make a special meeting?
About the interim week, what?
Because
Sixteen, sixteen. Sixteen. We're meeting on the sixteenth, sixteenth of September.
Strictly forty P's.
Forty P's, Stormwater.
I'm considering the traffic.
Well, it's whatever it is.
Whatever we need to trap. And maybe I
Yeah. You know, being less
I, I, I can do it, but I don't.
Just to be clear, the sixteen, just to be clear, the offices and our other director, actually, but we have actually staffed that night, I don't know, I think the agenda that I mentioned with that
It doesn't have to be Tuesday night. Yeah. I mean, anyway. Once you're done, four, nine, ten.
What, is the thirtieth upon coming to?
Thirtieth, uh, the
Well, because what I was going to suggest is that we stick with traffic on the twenty third and then do Stormwater the next week on the
Turn me, what I, what I, let me suggest, let's, let us, let's open our minds at this moment to the commitment that we're going to need a special it's a gentleman. Date to be determined. But we will be back with only traffic analysis on the applicant's request to continue this date. At a, we can, we can confer what we want to have a special meeting. And we can make it known to the people in that group, who would be members of the audience. So as participants in this process, that we will be having a special meeting, though it wouldn't be published anyway. Additional communication tethered to, um, public part of this process. Um, but I would say we should think about when that could be. And it can't be, it can't slash shouldn't be a meeting evening where there's already a board committed by um, Mr. Joy, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Ford. My concern after Vegas, what we'd also want to be able to verify to be get this face started. Something else is happening, so you're going to be out of that. Well, we can, I suppose we can, but earmark it to see, but I'm saying that we have to republish it verbally as well as in writing. I think it's, it's clear the members of the participants in this process going off off calendar to do a special meeting, that would be either continuation of traffic analysis and/or continuation of traffic analysis and to the extent available, Stormwater.
But what I'm going to say to you is we will be ready for both on the twenty third, understanding you don't necessarily want to do both on the twenty
Well, we'll let the evening tell us.
Right, but we'll be ready to do both, and then you can decide, understand there may be a special
But, um, why don't we just take a moment so that we can conclude this continuance request? Give the office, planning office, some certainty as to what to plan more, venue, staff, such. Um, what dates do work? What dates? Do work days? Thirtieth of September? Well, again, I was rejection of a day or Like it to be a dated September.
What happened on September seventeenth?
Uh, is that right? Yeah, sorry, we're So we can't, so there's three things that can be with us. There are words, yeah. There's the availability of the space.
Anything?
Uh, anything we could do? But the only thing we have eighteen, we should have the document verified. And so we should check.
Eighteen, September.
Yeah, or something. I'll forget about this.
So the problem is, that we do tonight, if it's before the twenty third, that's when the continuance So you would need to know, and I don't I don't have the availability, but it is what it is.
Yeah, right. So we have a potential to be on that day. All right, so
Tuesday.
Where is that? The thirty is a break to corrections points, where it's Tuesday, it's Tuesday, which aligns with
So we do the twenty third and the thirty?
Yes. Yeah, my, this is a front decision. I, although I understand, again, this is kind of concerned, I would not the board or the applicant for being able to progress any aspect of review, giving time for to do talk about. To me, I would leave that a little bit, like recognizing my progress. Yourself, the additional route for some reason.
Why don't we, why don't we cancel in both the twenty third and the thirty?
Yep.
I mean, if that, I mean, certainly we'll have some
I would suggest, since there's a lot of people who will be coming, um, you know, consultants, our consultants, um, city engineer. Yeah, on the twenty third, how do they sit around for two hours waiting for it? We do it first for an hour or something, or then do the other area.
Yep.
Just a lot of people sit around there. We, we actually had this discussion, uh, we had this Yeah, I think that, though our original plan was to place the forty P at the end of every evening's agenda, I think we have been given to revisit that in that, um, it may be easier to prioritize the that's pertinent, uh, so that we can try to get through that subject matter where most of the, most of the participants are, uh, include city experts who are being paid at, you know, paid by the city and by the public taxpayer, um, are here, you know, for the benefit of the board and the process are available, we should, we should, we should capitalize upon their availability and be efficient and economical as to the cost of their benefit. And so I think we should prioritize that it's in the public interest to do so, which means that other applications, of which there would only be three, possibly four, uh, will be on due notice that, to be set, to which we can arrive into your application, um, endeavor to do so, but we should let them know at the outset that you are welcome to request a continuance if you do not wish to wait to see. And I think that is the closest thing to sort of fair notice to those applications. That will be one of the two or three on an evening where we have a forty P application. And I think it is in the public interest as well as the process. You know, credibility and interest to give priority to the fact that there will be paid experts on behalf of the city to peer review the applicants, not to mention the applicants uh, experts, but the city will be paying through the public taxpayer, uh, do the experts that will be sitting in a room waiting to be
So, so Rob, you're saying the twenty third, for sure, is transportation and parking night for this project?
And, and that
Everyone should, everyone should have the reports and, sorry, they should have their reports in two weeks in advance. We should have our reports in one week in advance. And we're, by hell or high water, we're going to do transportation on the twenty third. So, exactly.
Um.
So that they know who to bring, she, she knows
We should, yeah, we should all be prepared for transportation, and this way we are leaning into forward movement, and if it proves impossible or impractical, we'll know that. But it won't be for want of setting up where we have right people in the room, okay, and we'll take them first that night.
Absolutely.
Or we're covering. Have a great discussion on the twenty third, but we may conclude it needs to continue a little bit, so it may start out from the evening of the third. May or may not, we don't know.
Right, that's fine.
So I just want to set the expectation that it may not be all
We may not, I understand, but I want to make sure that the applicant knows to bring the whole army and the public knows they'll be here on the third.
But don't, you don't need to bring the Stormwater people on the twenty third, bring them on the third, you might bring some transportation people back on the third, we don't know, we'll know that at the point.
So that's fine, so we're just doing traffic on the twenty third and potentially both on the
I don't, I don't think I want to pay your Stormwater. We just won't get to it.
On thirty?
No, on the twenty
No, no, wait, that's why I just
Okay, I'm just checking my calendar here. Okay, um. Anything further?
So, Mr. Chair, request continuance to September twenty third with the agreement that a traffic report on our end turned around in two weeks. And with the expectation that T E C will have their report to us a week in advance. And that we will have, um, a date to any by the end of this week about the submitted date of the civil engineer.
Uh, okay, thank you, turn me.
So moved.
That should be, so, uh, want to just adopt that motion, we have a, do it a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. July, most of the paper, Mr. Swan, continue the matter as, as described by the applicant's attorney, attorney Reed, um, until we, until the meeting of September, what was it? On my next thirty one, there's only thirty days to choose from, the twenty third. Um. Calling the roll, Mr. Swan, yes, Mr. July?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet? Yeah. Mr. Chan? Yeah. I guess it's probably affirmative, the eyes have it. With the conditions as prescribed, the motion carries, and we will see you on the twenty
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Including the two matters that we had continuance this for, we will get into the substantive applications that are before us this evening. This is the application of Reed Green, uh, five Dawes Street, continued from August twelfth, twenty twenty five. This is a variance application to conduct an accessory structure, uh, requiring, I'm sorry, to construct an accessory structure requiring relief from the side and rear yard setback as well as lock coverage. Can we hear from the applicant and, uh, Reed Green, the order?
Agreed and don't agree.
Yeah.
So, um. Um, so we took your advice as far as, um, bringing the garage in, so a special permit nonconformity to allow a seven foot, twenty foot addition to the existing garage that's nonconforming to the road setup. Um, an expansion of nonconformity. Um. The existing garage is not conforming to the rear setback in any addition, and we will continue with that nonconformity. Existing garage, uh, is a two foot, two point one foot rear setback with proposed addition setback to be three point three feet. Addition will not be more nonconforming to the existing garage. The existing three point seven uh, foot shed, which is now attached to it, um, will be removed. Um, and the new, um, additional will be taking part of that. Um, the addition is conforming to the left side with setback at ten point three feet. Uh, lock coverage is only the twenty five percent required, and the open space is at fifty six percent or forty percent is the minimum required. I think those are the two items that were required. Um. There will be no addition to a new nonconformity. Post change will not be more substantial documented to the neighborhood. Addition will maintain the sound of the existing structure with a matching hip roof. Structure are more open, open air. There are other nonconforming accessory structures and the budding properties in all are minimum of uh, plus or minus thirty four feet from this structure. On the existing garage now is in is in disrepair. The, with the, with the addition, structures be renovated, improved, uh, improve the presence in the neighborhood, and it should be functional where it right now is, is functional. Given the size and layout of the property, there is no alternative location for the garage. In addition, we better allow, and will, existing.
Very good. Uh, is there anything else you wanted? Well, we can continue with that if we have any questions, we'll, thank you. Uh, you're welcome to state it. Also, yeah. Um, okay, so, uh, closing the presentation for the part of the public hearing, um, going to the room, do we have any public comment that they wish to speak in connection with the application? Seeing no hands, um. I see no hands online. Have you seen the hands? Uh, we'll close public comment and go to questions from the board. Wish to pose a question to our
Well, this goes on in form of clarification. So by shrinking it, we went from a variance to a special permit. And you also felt that within the lock coverage. I think you were over the lock coverage before, now you're
May have been just blew a little over target.
But now it's just a special permit, and it's only because of the rear existing building.
Right.
That's great. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, any further questions from the board? See no further. Yes, you have in your recognized letter of a butter support, this is the twenty sixth. Um, and you have black people signing it. Were they talking about this new plan?
Yeah. Well, the first three signed with the original. Um, and the two that we got today basically signed the same paper that we showed them, we showed them. The first three from the original was basically shown down by five, four or five meters, so
well, it's based on it was just long there, so, yeah. Any other questions? Seeing no hands, uh, we'll close questions and go to deliberations. Again, we're deliberating the applicant's request, um, and, uh, we have a variance standard to review, so, uh, it's not a variance, uh, sorry. Even though it said that on the pause at the moment, that's so saying the words on the page. Um, we, uh, will be deliberating the special permit right here. Chairman, what you get?
I guess the first thing that's great is they brought various to the special permit, which is easier for for Um, there is no new nonconformity. That's the thing. The second one is, it, it won't be significantly more detrimental to me. I think even in the last we thought about detrimental, although it's, it's a variance and it's well invested, we said. A lot of bad things going. With that said, uh, I support this, I think it fits, uh, special permit way it was written, and I would go with it.
Good. Any further questions? I would just second with my colleague, and they also got onto the coverage issue while it's
Yeah, I would, I would agree with, uh, Mr. Swan and Mr. Chan, um, now we're we're in a much better spot than we were two weeks ago, so, um, I think, you know, the, the side and feet is, uh, really good, so I, I'm in support of this.
Okay. Anything further before we close deliberations? I think we've addressed criteria. I'll close deliberations. Uh, do we have a, uh, motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to approve five Dawes Street. Up the docket is variance twenty five dash five. Was it given a new number for?
Yeah.
Just keep it that way, even though it's been reduced to
Yes.
To prove the five Dawes Street V A R twenty five dash To prove the five Dow Street V A R twenty five dash.
Thank you, Mr. Met. So motion made by Mr. Chan to approve and second on the special permit for nonconformities. As amended from variance, all the rolls, Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Wild?
Yes.
Bet? Yeah. Chan? Yes. Yes, five and the affirmative, the eyes have it and the motion carries. Good luck to you.
All right, thank you very much.
The last application before us this evening in public hearings is the application on eighteen Union Street. This is the application for Dean Kitchen and Ann Sullivan by Lisa B., B. Taliban and Cost. This is an application for a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions and approvals to modify upfront setback. Nonconformity with eighteen inch height increase at the mudroom and to construct the condition of the rear. Turned again.
Right, Chair, can I have that? Yes, I'm going to recuse on this one. I, I've only met the architect Kevin twice, but I served on board with him.
Very good. They're a corporation trust, so. Very good. The five voting members remain. Myself, Mr. Swan, and Mr. Wild, Mr. And Mr. Kinte will be our ultimate at this meeting. Matters, except under oath.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Director Lisa B., me telling across three Gray Street. We're recording this evening as Kevin Lettotti, who's the architect on the project. Also, Nellie Kitchen is here and with her husband David, who is, David's not here because he's home with a new two year old baby that was born the same night we were that would be Lucy's. So we're here for special plan for nonconformities. David and Nellie propose to renovate their home by adding in addition to the rear and changing the pitch of the east mudroom to allow for sufficient headroom to allow them to walk out onto the post porch. And it's actually a fourteen inch increase and not an eighteen inch increase, as we said. The property is located in the R two zoning district. It's a single family structure. It's also part of the building control overlay district, although also more than seventy five meters old. And it's listed as contributory, contributory under the district data sheets. When you see the photos in a little bit, you'll see the property is actually in around seventeen eighty. According to the Form B where it's described as colonial, the assessments records have it dated at eighteen hundred. And the district data sheets say that it's seventeen fifty, where it's described as a central chimney half house on which it's listed as contributory. And you all may know this, but I learned this at the historic commission when they used to define homes as half houses, that was because there was an intention to build the other half later when they had the funds to do that. So that's how it's listed and you'll, you'll see the design in a, in a little bit. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here's the mind maps. What you might notice on this particular lot is that it's big for the South End and for Union Street. It's actually a conforming lot in every way except so this lot meets the, the area and frontage requirements and every other aspect of it except for the front yard setback. And so we're actually here basically on a conforming lot, front yard setback with a fourteen inch increase in the front yard, nonconformity. So the property includes eleven thousand six hundred ninety one square feet, where ten thousand are, are required. And ninety, has ninety nine feet of frontage where ninety feet are required. And as I said, it conforms in all ways except for the setback. It's four point one feet where twenty five feet are required. So the applicant is requesting as part of this and the reason that we're here is the, is the upward extension of that front yard setback. By that roof height change on the mudroom. And it is adding six hundred eighty four square feet. So that's why we're here in front of the board. That upward extension actually happens at twenty three point seventy, so not quite to twenty five, but at twenty three. So here's the site plan. You can see where the modifications are happening to this house. So there's an addition in the back that you can see in the middle of the screen. And then there's porch being added next to the mudroom, right along the easterly side of the house. So the east is to the right, coincidentally on this plan. Where Union Street is, but otherwise the house meets the dimensional requirements. So here's some neighborhood photographs. This is looking east down Union Street on the north side of the next. And this is looking east at the house. I would just want to show you the side. So there's no changes happening to the front side and to the side except for a couple of windows. The front facade is having a window that's going to be called fixed. There's a couple of windows added here, but they're all going to be the six over six S D Ls. And so, but this is the, the east side, excuse me, the west side looking east on Union Street. Next slide. This is further down westerly on Union Street. If you ever walked down the street, this kind of stands out. It's obviously the later house with the more recent addition. Next slide. This is looking westerly to the side of the house. That's the mudroom where literally that mudroom is staying intact, but the roof is actually hinging up fourteen inches to get headroom in that as you go out onto what then this is looking westerly down Union Street. You can see the house, like three houses down, you see that little red thing sticking out. Next slide. And then again, this is another angle of that same direction. Next slide. And this is a little bit closer on that easterly side. And this is the opposite side of the street. Just for neighborhood context. And this is looking down, westerly down the street as well. Next slide. And this is on the northerly side looking westerly down the street. That's the barn is on the corner of Woodland. Union. So the proposal is to lift that easterly side porch roof, which is going to be raised fourteen inches at twenty three point seven feet, where the current nonconformity is at four point one feet. As a result, that's why we're here seeking the nonconforming setback extension. The area removed in the back of the house, which Kevin's going to go over in a minute, was actually an addition that was done in two thousand sixteen. It's not of the original structure. That would be replaced with historically thoughtful addition, which Kevin will review for you. They're going to remove the eastern red mudroom floor and change the pitch so one can walk into the porch that's being added. As I said earlier, the only change on the front elevation is to affix the first floor window. And then their new window is going to be added on the westerly and rear elevation. It will be six over six S D Ls with three D muttons. None of the original, none of the windows in the home are original. The total new square footage being added to the house, mostly in the back, is six hundred and eighty square feet. The existing home is twenty five hundred and eighty seven square feet, just to give you an idea. I'm probably one of the only conforming lots in that area. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to go over the plans.
Good evening. Kevin Lettotti, obviously Lettotti Design. These are the plans we presented to historic commission to give you a sense. The house on the property, the top right picture, the center picture, Lisa Shetty looking down Union Street. Top right, left picture. That's the west facade where you are. The former porch and you see towards the back of the house. On the, on the left is the, what was a kitchen addition done two thousand sixteen. Nellie and Dave actually like to cook a lot. That kitchen is rather insufficient, so we're adding a what would be historically appropriate in a house like this, what we call the kitchen L. Which will be a two story addition. And again, just looking through the pictures. Absolutely. Excellent. These are the proposed addition, also showing the existing house and then the proposed addition. Let me just see. So the upper pictures are of the existing. Being added and you can see in the lower right, the porch, which is extending off of the mudroom. That's the is the existing mudroom. The lower right is the mudroom would be moved, removed and put at the last continues with the porch roof. I think you can actually walk underneath it. Then you can also see the kitchen L, the back of the house to the left, bottom right, during the two story addition. Next slide. In the back, moving at the upper left, you can see the configuration of the structures. The original house, fourteen sixteen, was the that you see there on the right side of the joint. The addition was to the left. Leaving all of that except for the small addition, which is the kitchen, which is currently a single story. Popping that out. In a second. You can see on the lower left hand side. There's also that small door which doesn't really connect to the public apartment. So we do the addition, the lower. You can see that door now comes and meets with the two story addition, so there's a little bit more piece of this in the construction. Next slide.
While we wait, you may in a moment.
Just joking.
So in order to grant this question permit, the board needs to find that there are no new nonconformities. And proposed changes will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, preexisting nonconformity. So here there is no new nonconformities and we also think that the, the board can find that the fourteen inch upward extension front yard setback, not at the four point one, but at the twenty three feet, is certainly not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. Next slide, please. So. As I said, but for that front yard setback, this would be an entirely conforming structure. The proposal does not further approach on that four point one feet, rather at twenty three point seven feet. Proposed addition is in the back and not really visible from the street. Even as you are walking down, going westerly on Union Street, you really won't even be able to see that second story addition in the back. You'll be able to see the porch, but not really the second story, a different part of the addition in the rear part of the house. The proposed new roof line on the easterly porch is a minor change that extends that nonconformity by not more than fourteen inches. The proposed shape, volume, massing, the structure is consistent, not only with this structure, but the other historic structures in the neighborhood. It's very complimentary to the historic aspect of this house. Eighteen Union Street is one of the larger lots in the neighborhood and could indeed handle a much larger rendition. But obviously that's not what's being proposed here. Taking all this into consideration and understanding that the board substantially needs to a great or significant extent we use in this context, we don't believe that the board can find that this proposal is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Any requests approval of this?
Good, thank you, Chair Me. We'll close that portion of public hearing. Very nearly empty room or comments? Any public comment? Seeing no hands, no hands online. Any other questions from the board? Any questions?
Do you quite on drawing with this fourteen inch roof?
You want to go right there? If you look at the existing ledger in the top right? Yeah. Then if you look lower? Now it's at a more shallow pitch.
So fourteen inches is extending into the backyard setback?
No, no, so that mudroom is at twenty three point seven.
Thank you. We answered twenty three point seven.
From the front of that front property line.
Oh, from the bucket, okay.
So it's still nonconforming, it has to be a twenty five. So the current nonconformity is four point one. But since this is a twenty three point seven, we're not at twenty five. So that's an upward extension.
Understood, okay. Thank you.
And it's only an upward at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is right.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you say the front yard. On the other side.
Yeah, no, 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 it's from, it's from the front.
Front yard. I'll catch it.
Thank you. Anything?
Yes. I noticed that the historical commission report, they approved it overall of some of the additions that are and noticing the assessors records, the house has two thousand five hundred eighty seven square feet. You happen to know with this expansion?
Sure, yeah, and I went over those, I'm sorry that I must have, I must have gone fast. So the addition is six hundred and eighty square feet. So.
It isn't replacing, what's the net?
That's the net.
That's the net.
That's the net, six eighty. And we had this, I think, this whole host of recent, the historic commission approved it. But this, this lot is a conforming lot. And but for that fourteen inches, frankly, we could put a lot bigger addition on there, which is not.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just really personally, I think it's a very pretty house on the street with quite a few others like it. Not a beautiful example of that, you know, seventeen hundreds here.
Thank you.
Anything further?
So I just had one, this is just a question, this isn't really anything. I think the meeting, they pulled you up, this is just a question. On that, the window on the first floor, it's going to be sort of half in fill. Is that, it looks like on the drawing, you're keeping the frame and the sill and you're just sort of making it look like the, the clavored materials?
Yeah, I'm doing what they often do on historic houses. When they change.
Yeah, you'll see the whole window
Right.
is clavorted over.
Right, they try to keep the vernacular of the but they need to put a stair in front of it, whatever. They still try to keep it, sometimes they leave behind windows still on the wall. So we have a need to redo it, but we need that space for something that's going to be higher, so we're just fix the upper window. And the traditional
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything further? Nothing. We'll close questions from the board and go with deliberations. Again, we're deliberating criteria for a special permit for nonconformities. Which is thanks all.
Yeah, weapon. So two pro and test for special nonconformities. The first per is satisfied in that there is no new nonconformity. Secondly, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists currently? I don't think that is the case. I think you're, you're adding on to it, you know, a reasonable addition, reasonably sized addition, but as we've heard tonight, it's going to be mostly visible from the back. Maybe, maybe as you're, you know, walking down and craning your deck, you'll, you'll see it. But when you're standing in front of the house, you won't see it. The porch is a nice addition to the house and it will look the same as, as it looked currently, with the exception of the, the change in the pitch. So for those reasons, I don't, I don't see this as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than it currently exists. And I can support.
Good, anything further? Seeing nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Wild, that sort of surprises the criteria. I will close deliberations and we will go to a motion. We have a motion approved and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities application for eighteen Union Street.
Thank you, Mr. Swan and seconded by Mr. Wild. Motion's made and seconded by calling the roll, Mr. Swan. Yes, Wild?
Yes.
Bet?
Yeah.
Chan? Yes. Yes, it's five in the room, the eyes have it. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
You too.
That concludes our public hearings for this evening for August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. We'll close public hearings in this meeting, which is approval of the minutes on August twelfth, twenty five. Chan, do you have any comments?
I have one. I think it's. I think actually what you wrote down is what was said, I think what was said. They were talking about the bar. Hold on, he said the increase was only point zero one eight. That's point zero one eight, if you change it to percent, it's one point eight percent. Because if you do the math, because that was a one point eight percent. So you wrote zero point one eight percent. I think she misled us a little bit. It's one point eight percent total. And if you look at the numbers just before that, where you wrote them, I think it was like twenty-three point two, and then they hit the twenty-five. It's one point. What's that, point zero one eight percent? One point eight. Okay, she can't, she can't change what she said, no. I think, I think she did say that. Where you wrote what she said. I believe, I mean, you can listen to it again, I guess, but I think that.
She said it. On the five dollar street, the last, uh, the last paragraph, the first sentence says, "The application requested continues," I think it's the applicant. Question?
So back to button, given that she's supposed to report for people's stuff. I think it's okay because she did put the explanation in there, so it's, you know, either that or we leave out part of the sentence.
Yeah, they don't have to put in sick. Let's listen to it again.
My lawyer, what is sick, babe?
He's sick, man.
Yeah.
To the extent that this isn't exactly what we know.
Yeah.
Brothers and sisters of the bar.
So with those, with those kind of changes, I'm going to hear you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Bay, Ms. Swanton, seconded, Mr. Chen, all those favorite voice vote out there. Hi, hi. All those opposed, extensions, no votes, the ice and motion carries. Uh, the amendments, um, the minutes are approved. So with that, um, other updates from the chair. And I, I think we've already discussed everything, we had a quick meeting this morning, um, that via Zoom with Mr. Swanton himself, Caitlin, Jennifer, Blanche, uh, and, um, Andy Port to just kind of go through what we thought was going to be this evening. I think that we have to, you know, really stick to the order of pressing, I think, forward and being, um, again, being rigorous to hold the advocate ourselves and process accountable to a timeline that, that aspires to actually finish on time, you know? And, uh, I think it's a bad way to start with the deficit. And, and it feels like we're at risk of a deficit just from the starting point, but. I think we can make that up, I'm certainly willing, it seems like we're all willing to do a, um, special meeting with notice. We're going to nothing competing for our time. As far as whether we get through traffic, is traffic analysis along with stormwater, basically, see, but we get a spark. But as long as we get notice, I think we got to have. What was it, um, Jared, it was two weeks, great, great, put it in.
Two weeks, they, we get there, two weeks in advance.
Yeah.
Our response, one week.
Okay. We, we all agree, just need to make sure that our, you know, experts and peer review consultants are aware. While uncomfortable, it is, we are, we share the discomfort equally. Uh, and we just, it is what it is. I think we just, we continue to do what we're doing, and that he responds in state, and I think he's not, this is correct. I mean, we just can't languish this really in the process. We're already mathematically doomed to the end.
I'm delighted to know we came up.
Yeah, I think it works. I think it's workable. Uh, I don't mind doing it, I actually feel a little bit of like relief not having to compete with other applications, we're just getting here, we're just doing that work, you know? Um, so we continue to, you know, hold ourselves and the audience and the process accountable to like a ten P M hard stop, which this additional meeting helps us preserve, I think that's important. Moment we slip that, you know, moment we, we slip that ring, um, we start to do whatever we feel we need to. I think, um, we, we will find ourselves here very late potentially, I just.
If I was the fourth applicant on the twenty-third, how long are you going to go with forty-five story? So if you're going to go two and a half hours, you know, if you ask for a continuance about it, you know, you'll never get to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to tell when we open those applications, we go, we let, and I let the audience, you know, and the participants in the applicants, our patients know what, that we're going to be going forty-five story at first. Um, I think I will tell them that it could very well be every bit of the hours we have, it could be something else. Those have, those have been an advertised, yeah, I mean, that's among the.
I know.
Maybe they could be pushing, but, oh, I think that we bring them in, I fear, and I hear you, but I don't want to just kick hand forward, because at the end of the day, let's bring them in, let's put what we can get.
I think I'm one of the, I'm one of the, the chance to be, it's pretty long, it's a favor to be.
Get them an idea, just like.
Take a chance and sit there, but I. That plot hard stuff.
Well, I think that the first one, it may be a little bit awkward, but subsequent meetings, we won't, uh, have, we won't have, we'll be gentle. And the first one is the process for instance, where, you know, they're already, already in fight. You know, we can't, you know, there are, we can't, we can't unring that bell at the moment, so we just have to have, and we have to deal with the offer this way. Tell them what we do, and we have, you know, deal dropers and then next, at next hearing, we'll make sure that we don't even want to know the agenda. But the offer just. With you.
Here's that.
You made the better of the first one.
Lisa made camera, tell her, oh, yeah. All right, um, I think we're, you know, let's, um, let's press on, and, um, I think, you know, we're certainly getting a lot of material, it's very granular. It's important to have, right, um, have all our experts in the, in the room, the audience, that we introduce them and know that, you know, call on individuals to give us their review, their peer reviews, and then process can hear us here. I think it's important.
You're giving them a hard, right? Then they, what we are giving them a hard stop. People who get these numbers to might be hurt, because if we're talking about.
Yeah, I, no, it wouldn't do that, I think, and this is only again next week, because people have. So crossover, swap the meeting and call, is the only meeting at risk for that. I think the only, and I'll put this to you when you tell me to agree, the only way to address that is to say, we will be at a hard stop five minutes, forty-five minutes before ten P M hard stop, or we tend to agree we do that. And just say, hey, we're going to stop this now, because we have, we will at least get through two of them. So we haven't taken a credible, trying to get to at least one of them. But, um, I would like to make sure that we at least try to get to one. And we're not going to get to any of them, that's just leaving them on the outside, it should send a little. Meeting doing before the meeting.
Are you suggesting a nine thirty hard stop?
Forty B, we started at seven. You know, we start shenanigans, right, on seven fifteen, we get ready. And we hold them accountable to like, you know, five thirty, that gives us thirty minutes to, you know, to get into at least one of the other applications. And we're going to let everyone know at the outset that we're liking, we're going to get, yeah, we're going to get to one. And we are likely not to get them. You want to, you want to continue us now? Seven thirteen A M, let's do that now. And first person on the list, you should, you should hold tight. Uh, second, third people on that list, we should continue. And again, just that one night, next meeting, because after that, we won't let Doc deal with, you know, applications that are destined to fail or destined not to be got to. They gave us a special meeting.
You guys know, when I was special meeting. Month later.
Yeah. We have lots of two.
Lots of twos is out there. I'm saying, I'm this, I'm just. We feel like, you know, so probably two and three might sugar contact.
Oh, you're saying.
This is the decision made last night. Give some ample time to hear if it's controversial and neighbors were going to come or what.
Thank you, thank you.
That topic, I, I wanted to put, uh, brought up in my mind was the deadlines for us, you know? So they're pretty short, you know, like for a special permit, I think it's only ninety days for a parents group. So, uh, I know staff is probably counting on their fingers to make sure they don't blow any deadlines, but are you getting the applicants, when we, when they come and ask for a continuance, are they also saying, I hereby, you know, are they sending an email following up that they give?
We have a standardized form that we use, we kind of make sure that they've added that location, they have checked that box.
I think, for example, like the one we've been doing on, uh, Erie Avenue.
Erie Avenue.
I mean, I, we're going to be way over. Right, so I mean, I would just be, I don't want to blow a deadline, let's make sure that, I mean, I think.
The special permit is lower, you know, section of the board might just go to continue because there's a good cause to continue the year, and right? Difference to those.
No, no, I just, I just want to, just, just so we don't fight with the applicant, maybe, or, you know, send them an email and saying, confirming that.
Agreed, we do try to do that, and, uh, if it's a cost of that, we're just making sure that every applicant, you know, starting to close loose on these types of things, that there is a, a session agreement when we get to a situation like this, that the applicant agreed.
Yeah.
And it's on the record that they've agreed to, like, that.
And I, and I do think it's, it's, I mean, it's valid suspenders, because Rob always says, you know, when we're about to deny something.
Yeah.
Well, it's up to you, we can deny you or you can continue.
Right.
So I mean, clearly, they're consenting. But I think.
Right, we always try to get it right.
Yeah, I always worry about that one offer. Offer pretty done.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, continuance is.
All the. Yeah, I wrote the dates out, but that's the time, we'll, we'll go back more actually, I just, like, you can also review.
Well, that was in the spring.
Yeah. So, yeah, again, with the forums, uh, we have to check it, and if it goes up something, we want to look at it. Usually going to the forums all the same thing as you're getting there. Each application will need year and day. Like that typically, uh, you know, with the applicators or for certain, like, you will run into a situation.
Just to pile on to this, that meeting on the twenty-third, first one's twenty Erie, the second one's nine Bronco. They've both been in front of us a bunch of times. My guess is they're both not going to be really long discussions the next time they come in. I, I think if, if they don't agree to continue their timeframe, I think we should do the hard stop at nine o'clock, so we can do both rather than.
Okay.
But if they agree to extend, that I don't.
You mean, when, you mean, uh, no, that night?
No, what I'm saying is, is if they, if twenty Erie, well, twenty Erie is the first one up, we'll get to that for the hard stop. Bronco.
Yeah.
If they agree to the extension and it trips over the timeframe.
Yeah.
Then I think we need the hard stop earlier and, and lead on that night. It's a big long topic.
I hear you, because you've already covered it.
But you can tell us at the next meeting whether they have agreed to extend, and if not, we should set the hard stop at nine o'clock.
We'll take a look at each of the. Ages or down, this was.
And, okay, you didn't want to, uh, you took the rule off, you didn't want to do that tonight?
Oh, no, I apologize, I might actually. You actually thought we were going to take up a meeting, you got, you had to.
Let's, let's put it on the next meeting to, to take out. It was on the agenda on fourteen, and then when I looked today, it was there.
Yeah, I, I know it's dropped off until this time, or later today myself, but it wasn't by this one. But it was, let's, yeah, let's fix that for next time.
Over there, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to get that rule, that's, we need to discuss.
They are, you know.
All right, anything for it? Motion to adjourn, I'm open. Those in favor? Please turn ninety minutes. The board can sit down.